Okay, thank you for having us. Thank you, we're back. This is here. We're back from the pregnant session. And thank you for seeing us and for hosting during our No Guff Week. We finally get to wear our shirts. We haven't had a meeting during No Guff in like three years. So we'll start with the pledge. Please join me.
Hi, President. To the flag of the United States, America, and to the Constitution, the Constitution stands on our nation, on our ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Terry, you want to start us with permission and vision?
Sure.
Thanks.
The Founding Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are proud to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and facility. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaging learners, particularly as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems and impact the world around them.
Thank you so much. Before we begin tonight, I just want to address a few of the comments that have been made during public comment during recent school committee meetings. It's important that our community be well informed of the facts. First, we received confirmation from the Massachusetts Department of Early Education and Care, which is the EEC when we're using regulations, and the Attorney General's Office that there's no investigation whatsoever regarding Founding Public Schools. As well, Founding Public Schools per Mass General Law has regular audits done, and there's absolutely no misappropriation of funds. The school committee does have one open meeting law complaint filed this fall, and that is still pending. And I just want to acknowledge the exorbitant amount of time and energy required from district staff and school committee members as they review misleading claims. Although it can feel like these distractions are trying to keep the work at the district, I'm really grateful that we're keeping our focus on students and we remain steadfast in our commitment to every student, every day. We are going to take our student advisory, and then if there's no objections, we're going to jump right to the presentation of teaching at school highlights. There's no objection. All right, Isabel, fill us in.
This week, as we know, is No Guff Week, so all schools in the district are participating in the same themes. Yesterday was pajama day, and today was twin day. So, and then we're halfway through, and then the freshman class is planning this pep rally, so that will be on here soon. Winter sports is wrapping up into the spring season, although each team is in the tournament or qualified at the moment, so that's cool. And girls' basketball had a great game last night. They lost, but they've really improved throughout the season. I mean, it's the first and last game of their whole game. And so that was great to see. Spring sports are starting, the tryouts week is March 17th, Monday, and then meet the coaches' nights, March 6th. There was an all Cape Jazz Festival, and Founding sent many students in both the Jazz Band and the Big Band, and that was a great success. Our SAT practice happening in guidance for juniors, so if that, if they get enough people, they'll start doing that in the next coming weeks. And then host families, there have been many exchange students this year in Founding, and they got to not only experience Founding, but they had seats, so that's great. And I feel like in the past years, we haven't had that opportunity for a lot of students, so it was awesome being to be friends with people from different countries.
Any questions for Isabel?
Yeah, the exchange students, well, that's only at high school. I'm not sure, but I know a few students that came to the school that were, that they hadn't like read that program before.
Yeah, please.
What countries? You didn't, like, all the exchange students, do you know where they come from?
A few from, or my good friend Rommel, she was from the UK, and then I think this girl was from, or it was like Brazil and then Jamaica, I believe.
Oh.
Yeah.
So, yeah. Four years ago, my son and daughter-in-law hosted one of those foreign exchange students, and that's two from Germany. So if anyone has the opportunity to host a student for the year, it's a relationship that will be never-ending for this family.
I had, we hosted when I was a kid, and I'm still close to the people we hosted. They came to my wedding. Yeah, it's an amazing experience. Well, thank you so much for joining us, we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Maureen for our T-Ticket highlights.
Thank you for joining us. Your setting is beautiful.
Pardon me?
Thank you for the beautiful setting. It's like the nicest view we ever had.
Yes, I have to say, our art teacher Julie Duffany and some students made that beautiful for our winter season. And also behind me, you're going to hear more about the phenomenal dragon that's here behind me on the stage. So I'm Maureen Lepin, I'm the interim principal here at T-Ticket, and I'm very honored to introduce you to one of our kindergarten teachers, Robin Green, and one of her students, Jay Lee, who is here, and they're going to talk with you a little bit about the amazing Lunar New Year celebration that we held here at T-Ticket a couple of weeks ago. And we also have some still pictures and some video to share with you around all of the celebrations that happened in kindergarten, and honestly, in the whole school. So, I think you'll enjoy it.
Thanks.
Thank you. So we are part of the kindergarten here at T-Ticket. We have two classrooms full of students, and we kind of change up each year what we do for celebrations, depending on who's in our classroom. So one of our families, Mr. Lee is here tonight, he came in to share with us, what story did he share with us?
He shared us with cutting papers.
Yeah, why would we cut paper?
To scare away the monster that doesn't like red.
That's right, that monster didn't like red. And he, and what were we cutting out of the paper?
Some shapes.
Some shapes, right? He taught us to cut out some shapes from the paper. And you'll see that in the video in a minute. He told us the story, the Chinese story about the monster, right? And we kind of scared it away, right? So if the kids knew what they were doing, he showed them how to fold the paper and cut the shapes. What else do we do for Chinese New Year?
We use chopsticks to eat ramen noodles.
Yeah, we see it hard. It's hard to even taste it, but did you try? Yeah. Did you get any noodles in your mouth? Sure did, we worked at that. What else do we do for Chinese New Year? What's this?
We made a dragon.
We made a dragon. Did it take one day to make the dragon?
Two days.
Yeah, at least two days, right? We had, we had to put all pieces, we talked about what we wanted it to look like, and then they made the parts, we put all the parts together, right? It took a few days, right? So what did we do with the dragon?
Somebody hold the head, somebody hold the fly.
Show them your red shapes and cut out the papers. So these have been hanging in the window, right? To scare away the monsters. All right, and what else? What year is it? The year of the?
Year of the snake.
The year of the snake, so we show, you'll see snakes. The kids had holes, and they had the snakes on the holes, and you'll see, you'll see me still be sun, who was, who was very excited because he had his old Chinese dragon on a lantern, right? And we hung up lanterns in our room, and he was so excited, and every kid in school had to high-five him all the way down the hall. It was just a great celebration to share. One of the things we do with our DEI program here in Founding is really to try to celebrate everything, to celebrate who are we, and so we learn about other people, we learn about ourselves. And I think we do a really great job here at Founding with that. We're very fortunate to have a diverse community that we can share these things, and that families are willing to come in and share their traditions with us, their traditions, their cultures, and things that they do. One of my students was in our classroom, and he said to his friend, he's like, "I'm going to play with my Chinese friend today." And it's, we've come so far in that, you know, we came from a place that where we used to say, "Oh, we don't see color, and all children are the same," and thank God, we've moved beyond that. We've moved to a place where, no, who are you? Where do you come from? What do you bring? That is a huge growth that we've had here at Founding, rather than trying to have all chim- children assimilate and become what is in the culture. It's so much nicer, it's so much more fulfilling, it's so much more authentic when they can share who they are with each other. So for a student to recognize that, and another student can honor that, it is really growth for all of our students, from preschool all the way up. And so we appreciate the room and the support to be able to grow in that way. So, right, Jay Lee, should we show them the video?
Beautifully said. Thank you. Thank you for that.
If it's still right there, all right, we'll push a button. Okay, so this is not the music that Mr. Lee gave me, but it's the music that Ryan was able to download. It's what we had in the home.
This is where I get nervous that it's not going to work. Play your yours?
Yeah.
It looks like they got noodles. There were some noodles on sticks.
You're just running your act.
Yeah, making sure that we're all good. Is anyone else running a table?
Well, they're working on the technology, I'll just take a minute to share kind of the experience of having our kindergarteners parade through the entire school. So for the celebration, all of our students came out into the hallway to celebrate, to provide high-fives, to clap for all of the students, and we went around the entire school, third and fourth graders, like, it was, you know, it's one of those heartwarming things when you have an entire school of kids at all ages, so excited to cheer on the youngest students in the building, to cheer on the, our two kindergarten classes, Mrs. Boudreaux's class and Mrs. Green's class, as they walk through the school. And we did have music playing on the intercom. Don Williams had music playing for us all, so it was, it was a really special afternoon for all of us. And I, I really appreciated the older people really supporting and celebrating the kindergarteners. And I imagine that the kindergarteners got a kick out of it, too, to help their kids cheering for them and high-fiving them as they went by, and just generally being really excited about the event. So it was, it was a really, you know how you have those days sometimes, and you walk away, and it's like, that was, that was a feel-good, feel-good half-hour of our youngest kids, you know, our kindergarten kids. And you've got a sense, and Jay Lee and her conversation with Mrs. Green, and seeing that we had two of these, you'll see in the video once it gets going, that each class had their own dragon, that the students put on their heads, with their feelings.
I'm impressed with how rugged they are, they really held together.
Pardon me?
They really held together.
They really did.
They carried around all the halls.
Yeah, and even after the fact, right, Jay Lee? So any questions, any comments while we're waiting to get the technology rolling again?
Oh, this looks promising.
Well, we spoke too soon.
It's a, it is a short little video, but it would be fun for you to say. Yeah, that's right. And we appreciate Ryan Weathers' help with this as well, because we were just, all of us sending videos and photos and everything else, and he magically puts it all together at our, yeah, so we really appreciated that.
So Ryan, just so you know, it does look like it's up on the Zoom.
Thank you so much, that was, that was great. It looks like a really fun, if you do it next year, I want to come. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes and length, and I do remind you that failure to lead to the chair violates Massachusetts general law. Due to open meeting law, the committee cannot act on public comment for items on the agenda. The chairman accepts comments following the committee's discussion. You can always send us feedback to schoolcommittee@foundingk12MA.us.
Any public comment? I'll just make a statement that, trying to be mindful that people are really passionate when they speak about public comment and during public comment, I've sort of been reflecting how I can make it, so people don't really show up exactly at two minutes. So I have a first timer set for a minute forty-five, and then an additional timer set, and that will be like your fifteen-second warning, if that's okay, so that everybody, because I feel awful when it's like two minutes, and then people are still trying to get their thoughts on it, so.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks, Melissa. Hi, Rachel Russell, and I will start with, the Attorney General Criminal Review is not with the Founding Public Schools, it's directly with the superintendent. And I have an email, it is still very much open, and a verbal confirmation as of yesterday that the criminal review is still open with the Attorney General. There's actually two notes, I filed an additional one for personal reasons. This one, the first one is directly related to the grant. And for months, I've been requesting the records from the district. Three separate times, everything is right here. These are the files the district has presented me each and every time regarding the grant. I may want to request the EEC, these are the files, and I'm going to submit these for public record. If anyone needs to request them, they're here. There's an EEC and a district, and they're very different, most notably the budget workbooks in each. A budget is required to be submitted, the district has to account for every single dollar of the $372,000 that they applied for. The EEC wants to know where every single dollar is going to go. This is the budget workbook that the district sent me three separate times. Lots of zeros, and it's for $61,000. The EEC has no record of this. I had an email confirming that. They don't know where this came from. Someone has altered and falsified a public record, which is a felony in the state of Massachusetts. This is the correct budget workbook, which is included in the EEC pile, okay? And in this, it shows that there was a $62,000 request to add a classroom to the YMCA. The classroom does not have a preschool in Founding, that they listed as a Cape Cod Founding Learning Center, that's not even a name. So the district was not awarded these funds. What if they were? Where was that money going to go? I'm going to leave these here, thank you for your time, I have fifteen seconds, but I want to leave these here. I would have liked them submitted, Sharon, I do have them on a USB for you, if that makes it any easier. But the budget workbooks, I want everybody to take a close look. These were sent to you in November, maybe in the midst of all the emails, you may have overlooked them. This budget workbook does not exist. This is what the district has sent me three separate times. This is the correct one, accounting for every single dollar of the $372,000. This is serious, you guys, okay? I'm going to use my two minutes at the public comment during public comment for any meeting going forward to highlight more areas of concern, such as the faults and misleading statements within the narrative. Thank you.
Hi, can I just start? Yes. My name's Kim Bolzford, and my daughter is in kindergarten at East Founding Elementary. As a certified teacher and reading specialist who chose this school for its incredible staff, whose warmth and dedication truly go above and beyond, their energy inspired me to join the PTO and the Courtyard Garden Committee, which is what I'm here to talk to you about today. Our work in the garden has been amazing. I've worked with second, third, and some fourth graders in small groups, sharing my love of nature. The kids love when we discover critters and learn if they're beneficial or harmful to the garden. Many are now eager to start their own gardens at home, so it's so important to continue this type of work for the future of our environment. Thanks to the Mass Farm-to-School Initiative that the superintendent is involved with, in partnership with Farming Founding and outreach to edible landscapes of Cape Cod, we're expanding the garden to grow enough food for all students to try. My priority is planting fruit trees, and I've been working with the town's Public Works Department to find the best location. We're lucky to have generous donations lined up, including pawpaw trees, fall harvest raspberries, and vegetable plants from local businesses. Pawpaws are fruits that look like mangoes and taste like a mango banana custard, so I've been told. I didn't know either. Because of their short harvest period, they are not carried in grocery stores, so we will get to try something new. Another local business will donate other types of trees based on their availability near the end of winter. This is just the beginning. We have big projects ahead, including repairing and building new beds, and we'll be reaching out for volunteers in the spring. I'm excited to continue this work at East Founding Elementary School, and we hope to get the whole community involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Keep us on that list in case we need free labor.
Hi, I'm Camille Hamilton, fourth grade teacher here at T-Ticket and Founding president. Just have two really quick comments. Number one, I just wanted to say that I'm continuously, every year, surprised and disappointed that in your evaluation of the superintendent, that you are not asking for feedback from teachers. We're the ones who are teaching the curriculum, we're the ones enacting the initiatives, we are the ones living this every day, it seems like. To really get a true evaluation of what's going on in the district, you should be getting feedback from us. Second, really quick point, which I just noticed when I walked in, I've been to a few, quite a few of the school committee meetings, this is the first time that I've sat in the audience and had your backs to us.
It's weird, right?
It's weird, I don't love it. It feels very exclusionary, especially during No Guff.
Yeah, it's weird.
So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
My name's Amanda McGonagall. To quote Chairwoman Kelly Welch in an article published after last school committee meeting, she said, "We need strong leadership, especially through difficult times." I'd urge this committee to consider whether or not we are holding standards for strong leadership, considering what we learned after the last evaluation subcommittee meeting. For those that don't know, the admin's evaluation process has a significant limitation. Feedback is only considered if it directly connects to the superintendent's predetermined goals. Why does this matter? It means that no matter how serious or impactful an issue is, whether it involves decisions affecting students, families, or educators, it is not reflected in the evaluation unless it fits neatly into a preordained set of objectives. What message does this send to our school community? Are we really saying that important issues, no matter how significant, don't matter unless they've been itemized on a checklist? Imagine how it must feel for our educators and families to know their concerns won't be addressed unless they happen to align with a limited list of priorities. If something impactful happens that doesn't tie back to the green sustainability initiatives, as an example, the committee cannot reflect on it in the evaluation. Are we prepared to say that these issues related to school safety, teacher retention, or student well-being don't matter because they weren't listed as a predetermined goal? This kind of rigidity feels entirely disconnected. Did you know that giving the administration an unsatisfactory rating is virtually impossible unless they've already received a needs improvement in a previous evaluation? Think about that for a moment. We're holding our students and teachers to a higher standard than we hold the very office responsible for leading them. If a child receives a four on her report card in the next semester, turned in no homework and did no work, would her teacher hesitate to give her a one because she hadn't received a two first? Of course not. Teachers reflect real-time performance honestly with the goal of spurring positive growth and accountability. Why should this process be any different? Standards exist to ensure the individuals entrusted with shaping the lives of our children are held accountable. It's time to ask the hard questions. Is this evaluation process protecting our students, educators, and families, or is it protecting leadership? If an educator wouldn't need to score and needs improvement first to face meaningful accountability, why then are we allowing different standards for those at the very top of the system? We need strong leadership in this, isn't it?
Hi, Diana Wilson. I'm a parent of four children in this whole system. Under this administration's leadership, children are suffering. They're being traumatized, victimized, and their education is being impacted, and staff are going through the same. And then navigating the future proposals, when you add to that, and all that families have gotten, is more stress. But these proposals are just the most recent in this administration's series of blunders. Focusing on the future and projected data assumes that Focusing on the future and projected data assumes that we don't have issues we need to address right now. That couldn't be further from the truth. Families shouldn't have to consider whether it would be better to pull their children out of district than have their education neglected here. And I want to be clear, this has nothing to do with the teachers. Our staff in all the schools are amazing. They love our little people, and they do the best they can to protect and take care of them within the school's four walls. They cannot control the lack of resources and support that they are given them. How can we focus our attention on resolving a potential future enrollment problem when we aren't giving our staff and students what they need right now? We teach kids that when you do a project, you read up on the topic, do the research, educate yourself, and then formulate a plan. Time and time again, this superintendent has come up with an idea and run with it without any forethought. This is ultimately damaging to our children. Enough is enough. The community is so concerned about this, yet the school committee chair was quoted as saying the committee thinks there is weak leadership. Is that really how you all feel? We are paying attention and will take action at the polls. The community needs to hear your voices. We are watching and listening. Are you hearing us?
You okay? Hi. My name is Sarah Bogdanak, three students in the schools, three different schools. Good evening, members of the school committee. I stand before you tonight as a voice for a community that no longer trusts this committee to act with children. Your actions contradict the very mission or values you claim to uphold. If you are truly committed to the foundations for excellence outlined, then it is time to reflect on where you are falling short. How can we trust this committee when your actions fail to reflect district's core values, partnering with families, strengthening our community, and creating a safe and secure learning environment? Right now, please do not feel like partners. Our community does not feel strengthened, and many no longer believe that this is a safe environment for their children, mentally, emotionally, or academically. That is why the same community representatives at every meeting and on a subcommittee meetings, we keep showing up, not because we want to, but because we have to, because trust has been broken, and we will not stop holding you accountable to be seen change. This is also on your website, making decisions to fulfill the educational needs of children is the primary responsibility with which the citizens entrust the school committee. Trust is built through actions, not words. If you truly stand by your mission, then prove it. Listen to the families, respect their voices, and start making decisions that reflect the values you claim to uphold. Our students deserve better, our teachers and staff deserve better, and we will not stop fighting for them. Thank you.
Okay. Moving along. Can we move? We're like half of us. We can help you. Yeah, I was just worried about how long it's gonna take you.
We're banging them quick. We'll be standing. Katrina, right here.
No, you don't. Everyone else, though. You're gonna need one of those tables right in here.
We're gonna mess everything up.
Okay.
Next up, we have the first read on school choice for next year, 2025-26. And you'll remember, if you were on the committee last year, that we'll have our public hearing at this, but this is just our first one. At the numbers. Okay, so I'm recommending four seats, grade, eight.
About some of the work we're doing in the schools. Okay, so observation number one. As a nonprofit created to support found public schools, we have built a program that other districts want. We are an asset to the community and to the school district. Granted, that is my observation, but I think it's pretty. Observation number two, we have a great board of directors. This is a picture of us at our retreat last spring up at the NOSCA Lighthouse, which is phenomenal. They've done phenomenal job up there. So if you haven't done enough yet, please do. It's amazing. But the board of directors is represented by people who are in this community who bring a great mix of skills, perspectives, and experience to our board and really helped Ron and I and our program leaders look to the future and be very strategic about where we want to be and what we want to do. We've also assembled an awesome team. Our staff members and program leaders work together to recruit volunteers, train volunteers, and support volunteers. And these volunteers in turn deliver programs and provide opportunities for our students that other districts do not have. All of the folks couldn't be here tonight, but this is a great group. So I'd like to make sure to give a shout out to all of them. Fourth observation is that we have prioritized four focus areas for VIPS. This allows us to concentrate in areas where we can make the greatest impact, while also meeting student needs. These four areas, I'll go through them quickly and also just go through some of the impacts. I guess these are more the sort of quantitative impacts, but of course, the qualitative impacts of the stories that we really like to share. And we'll do that this week for I Love VIPS. But the four areas are mentoring, academic support and enrichment, financial literacy. And along with financial literacy, that's our short version, but it's really financial literacy, life skills, and career preparation. And then health and wellness as well. So in the almost forty-three years that Falmouth VIPS has existed in this town, I believe that the key to our sustainability comes down to one thing, and that is relationships. I'd like to now issue a few challenges. One, and this is for everyone in this room and anybody that might be watching at home or listening at home, and that is to get involved. VIPS provides meaningful opportunities for volunteers, whether you have one hour a year, or one hour a week, or anything in between. And I just wanted to point out too that no matter who is initiating the request for volunteers, your involvement makes you a VIPS volunteer, and we welcome you and would like to have you. Challenge number two, bring a friend. We tell this to the high school student volunteers all the time. It's a lot more fun when you deal with a friend, or a spouse, or a neighbor, or a colleague. So please think about that as well. And then, challenge number three, stop procrastinating. We can match your skills, your time availability, and your interest with something that will really make a difference in the schools. You will not end up doing something you don't like. We're pretty good at this. We've been doing it together for a long time, and we promise you that will be a fun and meaningful experience. And then lastly, by being part of it, you'll be something, part of something that's positive and meaningful. And why don't we take questions? We do have a few left, two minutes, I think.
Thank you so much. Questions?
Well, mine's loaded, so you can.
Really?
Get her a soft bowl and then.
Okay, mine's very soft. Oh, okay. Someone's been volunteering once a week for an hour. My daughter's class doing their garden time. I didn't sign up with VIPS, but I have all these hours I've already done. Can I come to you retroactively?
Yes, they never, it's never too late. They, we take them retroactively. If you're signing up at the school, we're probably getting them, but just be sure.
Okay. Oh, that little sign and sheet, it says, are you VIPS? And I didn't, I never check it because I don't know.
Then yes, we will take all of those hours.
So start checking that.
Start checking that box, but also you can, you can estimate. I'm giving the number.
So I work in nonprofits, so I know what it means for the hours. Can you tell everybody why that?
So the reason we are so annoying and ask you to log your hours with us all the time is that, so one of the things about VIPS you may not know is that one hundred percent of the programming that we do is funded through grants, private donations, and philanthropy. So every time I write a grant, one of the questions tends to be, especially from these foundations, is how much of your, you know, how much support are you getting for you? So our volunteer, the number of volunteers, the hours, our volunteers contribute and all that. So it really does matter. We do really use the numbers. So thank you.
I was wondering.
We use the number eight hundred. It's probably a little low right now. Before COVID, we were over a thousand. We're building that number back up slowly but surely, but we're about eight hundred, which is still a pretty impressive.
It's incredible.
Yeah.
That's why the people in the audience, this is an incredible group to get involved with. Starting in nineteen eighty-three with twelve people.
Eight.
Eight volunteer tutors. And now all these years later, there's eight hundred. These are people in your community. It's a, it's, if you don't know anything about VIPS, you really want to investigate it, what you can do. And as, I'm sorry, I'm taking over your thing. But after he says that, it can be one hour a week, or it can be one hour a month, or more hours, just everything. And our children are the ones who benefit and our teachers because, so you can help them for this great organization. And I don't, who's the student of the month this week, or this year, this month?
Where we are right now. Annika McGinnis.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't, I didn't bring my notes with me.
She always does the show.
Another awesome student.
Yeah, yeah.
They're just amazing. So for those of you who don't know, every month we recognize a Falmouth High School Student Volunteer of the Month. And it's, it's amazing. I mean, these kids, like when they send it, they fill out the Google form and we're always like, whoa. It's pretty, and a great mix and variety of things that they do. It's not just school related alive. These kids are doing things out in the community and with their, all with their interests, which is what we try to tell our volunteers. Do something about it.
But you have to take some pride for that because kids learn by example. And they've grown up in a system filled with volunteers.
Yeah.
And so they, they learn that that's part of community.
Yeah, I, I think it's interesting. I mean, our kids don't grab an eyelash when people are walking down the school hallways with those big tags. That's just how it is in that, for generations that we're on, so it's pretty cool.
Yeah. Chris?
I had a question here. Are there any areas where you're looking for more volunteers?
Yes, I knew somebody was going to ask that, so thank you. We are always, always short of mentors. So mentors, we have a couple of different mentoring programs, but Nisa Morton's K-12 program is the one that we do ask for. It's a once a week commitment, and that is in a school. So you'd be matched with a student in K-12. All of the counselors have waiting lists right now. And not only is that sad and heartbreaking for us, it's, it just is indicative of like the fact that a lot of kids could really use that extra support. I mean, we all could. But yeah, so we're going to be doing a lot of recruiting events between now and the end of March to like try to raise that awareness and that need for mentors. But I would say that's our number one. Dave, don't be mad at me for not saying financial literacy. Volunteers to do that work as well, but I want to go to mentoring. So thank you.
Follow-up. A specific grade or level?
Well, the elementary schools have the longest list. Yeah. Yeah, you're welcome. Great question. Thank you.
Questions? Katrina. This may be a little premature, but do you have any concerns about your grants and your funding? Oh, Lena is coming here.
I would. I know, I'm a knocker. I would.
I got it.
Would you?
Thank you. Looking good.
We're looking good right now. Thank you very much for asking. It kind of goes back to that relationships piece. We have really developed relationships with a lot of the funders in the, mostly in Cape Cod and Boston South region. So they know us, they know what we do. They see the results that we, we get thanks to the community and our partners and volunteers.
Thank you so much for coming and sharing stuff with us. Love it. Okay, next up we have the first read on school choice for next year, twenty twenty-five, twenty-six. And you'll remember, if you were on the committee last year, that we'll have our public hearing at this, but this is just our first one. At the numbers.
Okay, so I'm recommending four seats, grade, each for grades one through eleven. We do not recommend taking choice students in a twelfth grade, and that's been standard all the time. And mostly it is concerning with the number of credits that a student may need if they come in and may not be able to graduate. And unlimited seats at kindergarten level, depending on the seats that are available in the school. On the second page, we have just a little history. We have five years. As you can see, this current year, twenty-four, twenty-five school year, was one of our highest years, certainly the highest in the five years of having forty-five new students in school choice this year for a total of one hundred and eighty-four. And so that's, that's been the, been the highest in the five years. We did have forty at twenty-one, twenty-two, but that's, you know, forty-five is certainly high. I just wanted to talk about our students that go out so you can see how many students come in. We actually are down this year with the number of students that have left. We were at fifty-seven, and that's compared to last year at seventy-six. And so just fun, we have thirty-two students that are, have their parents, a parent or parents, are staff members in our school that are choice in. Those numbers, so that's about the hundred and eighty-four.
And I don't know if you have it, but are we still sort of leading the case with the number of kids coming in?
Yes, we are leading the case with the number of kids that choice in. So thank you for the questions. So next meeting, we'll have a public hearing, and then we will ask you to vote on the number of seats.
Just a question about the dates of May ninth, twelfth, and sixteenth. Is that earlier than past years? Has that always been somewhat consistent?
It's consistent. We always do it in May, so.
Thank you very much.
I have two questions. So just to, just to be clear that I heard correctly. So we have forty-five students coming in this past year and fifty-seven students that went.
Forty total.
Forty-five new.
Forty-five new, so there's a total of one hundred and eighty-four. And a total of fifty-seven going out, not just from this year.
Oh, I totally.
A fifty-seven out.
Okay, so that's what I.
So the fifty-seven is compared to the one eighty-four.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, just to understand your, the thought process, could you, how did the, how did the four seats in the grades, do you explain that process?
So just being careful that the number of choice students coming in for grade wouldn't tip over to having to add another classroom. Trying to keep our class sizes low. And so I know it does seem low, you know, low there, but just looking at all the numbers and just, you know, making sure, we did draw. A year ago, we had six seats. We never really met six seats before. So we, just looking at the numbers, I just want to be careful that we're not in a situation where we might have to accept more students in than, and make class sizes go up.
Of the forty-five new this year, the numbers, right, how many are kindergarten? Like, these are the forty-five new this year. So are each grade one through eleven have four in them, or that kindergarten number is high?
The kindergarten number is the highest, and I don't know it off the top of my head. I can't see Sharon's. I don't know if she remembers right off the top of her head. I don't know the kindergarten number. We have some grades where there may not be any students. Right. And then, you know, some, we, we actually get the four seats this year. We never had to turn anyone away.
Don't imagine getting a kindergarten is nice because I'm.
Yes.
Do they, I assume they stay because some.
Our students do persist. Once they're here, they do persist.
Are siblings guaranteed to see?
Yes.
Yes.
Any last questions on that? All right, it'll come back at the next meeting when we do the public hearing. So if you have questions. All right, we got to act on a whole bunch of stuff. First was our field trip to the URI robotics competition.
This request is from Pamela Mieski and Andrew Cussens. They've been as a robotics competition for students of grades seven to twelve. There'll be approximately seven to ten students participating. The actual dates have not been confirmed yet. These are potential dates. This is out of state request only. It's not an overnight state, so they will be going back and forth each day. In the fall, we talked to you about the robotics.
That's what I was trying to say.
It's the one we talked about. So yes, in January, they were told exactly what they have to build, and so that they're in the process now of building, and then this is their, their first competition in this arena.
So.
So.
Okay. Is there a second?
Same.
And so my only question is whether or not they have what they need to build.
They do.
Okay. You know, I don't want to say they can go and not pick them up to succeed.
They do.
All right, good. Any other questions on this? We're all here. All in favor, say hi. Hi. Any opposed? Any extensions? It's unanimous. Great. Oh, I mean. Now we have so much generosity. First is a five hundred dollar donation from Falmouth Road Race to the art department.
Yep, for Jane Baker at the Falmouth High School. The AP students voted that they wanted to use the money to have another visit from the amazing animal ambassadors. That is really helpful for their portfolios. They do grow into the animals. And they will share the opportunity with other art classes. So they'll have others join in, but that was the AP students selected that.
I'm going to turn my. Oh, sorry. Mike's got the second. Any discussion on that? All in favor, say hi. Hi. Any opposed, extensions, that's unanimous. Next up is a thousand dollars from Kid Cut Five for credit for life. It's relevant.
Yes. So for Janet Rocha, the funds will be used for raffle items and coffee muffins for volunteers, you know, and other things like gift cards. I don't know what blocking wallets are.
That's so.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, yeah, that's right. They're showing that. Other, just other student raffles, other, some items that they'll be using. But.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Katrina. Any last discussion on that? All in favor, say hi. Hi. Any opposed, extensions? That's unanimous as well. And now the big money, four thousand dollars from J. Lynn Foundation for Science and Math.
Yep, for Chris Brothers, the funds will be used for student scholarships. There'll be two outstanding juniors, one in math and one in science.
Awesome. Thanks, Mike. Chris guy. Any questions on this one? All in favor, say hi. Hi. Extensions.
Great. Please, because I forgot to say before, I just want to thank the Road Race Foundation and the Cape Cod Five and the J. S. Lynn. Thank you so much for your generosity. That we appreciate that.
Thanks so much. Thank you. Next is acting on the memorandum of agreement to increase the stipend for band assistant and band percussion through winter and spring. Make a motion. I'll make a motion. Thank you. Welcome to second chair.
Listen, Chris wants it.
Chris got it. Any comments on this one? Great, all in favor, say hi. Hi. Any opposed? Any extensions? That's unanimous as well. That's great. Okay, next up is acting on the revised twenty-four, twenty-five school committee assignment. So that is just the list from earlier in the year with everyone's assignment, and we are just deleting Sue Augusta off of the negotiations committee. It's not their motion. There's no other changes. It's just deleting. Susan. Table wasn't on here, correct? No, we did that with that one the last time. Oh, no, it was, it was just an extra assignment. It wasn't like a.
Okay.
It didn't make a list.
Okay.
All right.
Can you just explain why?
I'll make the motion for discussion.
Thank you, Mike. Is there a second? A second. Thanks, Melissa.
I have discussion. Do we need to add a third to that? Otherwise, I'm fine with it.
So we're so far through, I think it would be really hard for somebody to start. So, and Melissa, we liked having three when the process took a really long time, and we are like zipping through with FDA. It's going so smoothly. That was more when we couldn't make all the meetings, but fair point. I think we're good.
All right.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor, say hi. Hi. Any opposed, any extensions? That's unanimous as well. Thank you so much. Superintendent update?
Great. So first, I want to talk about our preschool and kindergarten registration numbers. We have, in pre-K, I'll start with pre-K. We have received about sixty pre-K peer applications for next school year. They will begin reviewing the applications right after our break around February twenty-fourth. Administration is reaching out to any current preschool three-year-olds just to make, you know, to see if they haven't already applied, right? So they're reaching out to them right now. So we will have more updates later, but to have sixty at this time of the school year is, is great. Just to remind you, when Sandy was on her presentation last time, she had mentioned the pre-K is free for the peers now, so all of pre-K is free. We have moved from two full-day classrooms to four full-day. We are keeping the same number of classrooms at nine. We just did a shift in, you know, the, the full day is what people requested. So we're, we're giving more full-day options. We are not expanding. We can't expand at this time, but we are, we have gotten more peers in at this time. So just wanted to kind of talk about that. And then we will continue to assess our needs for post-students with IUPs and peers. Just to remind a little bit about the pre-K research and why it's, it's so important. There's just, when you attend a pre-K program, it's a significant positive impacts that are seen in children's with vocabulary, early reading, math, and social emotional skills. They're more likely to attend college, have fewer behavioral issues later on, including fewer suspensions, less absenteeism, and fewer legal problems later in life. They are healthier, more likely to graduate from high school and make more money than their peers. Pre-K, we know many districts are going to full-day pre-K clear across. We are still going to offer some half-day, but just, just want you to know that, you know, we are still within the confines of what we have right now. We are still being able to grow and, and offer, but we are not, we are not trying to go beyond. We had said that all through the fall, that we're not trying to, we value all small businesses. We are not trying to take away from the other, but we know there are children that do not have opportunities for pre-K.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry. I have a pre-K question.
Yeah, so we have sixty peers, new ones.
So it could be current three-year-olds.
So how, we're going to get sixty new people. We're going to get sixty new people.
It could be current three-year-olds that are in the program. That apply to the. To four-year-olds. They have to apply each year. I'm sorry.
Okay, so.
But we have, you have, you have to apply each year, so it's sixty total applications for peers. Sorry if I did nothing.
Okay, so how many four-year-olds are leaving then? Or is it going to be the same that, is next year going to be the same as this year pretty much, or? Am I not understanding the formula?
So I, I can, I'm going to talk about kindergarten numbers. I can't tell you how many four-year-olds, current four-year-olds will be going into kindergarten. I don't have that, or how many four-year-olds are leaving preschool now?
Are they leaving? Yes, not where, just are they leaving or is it going to be the same amount?
This was a.
Because you were saying about it's the same as it's been. I'm just curious.
You know, the classroom, the nine classrooms, we are growing classrooms. That's going to stay the same.
So we're, okay.
Yes, we're offering more full-day for our. In those nine spaces, we are offering more full-day.
Okay, I didn't quite understand.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Now I do. I think I had a question. Actually, Mike hasn't answered.
Along with Terry's point, what is our number now? And then which of our number, do you know the percentage of three-year-olds and four-year-olds?
I will get that to you. We have one hundred and eighteen students right now of three, three-year-olds and four-year-olds.
Yeah, okay.
I would, I'd have to get the exact breakdown for you of how many three-year-olds and how many four-year-olds.
That's a good number because half of that is fifty-nine. So if we can assume fifty-nine move on and those sixty go in, but I just, that'd be good. Thank you very much.
And those are just peer, the sixty is just peers.
Yes.
When I give one hundred and eighteen, that includes our students on IUPs.
Okay.
With the constraints that you talked about, the number of classrooms and not growing the program, do you anticipate that there will be a waiting list for peer applications?
I can't answer that because I don't know if everyone just registered early or if we have more registering early and then we'll still have the, the continued that we've had in the past. So I don't know.
But right now.
Because this is a new, this is the first time we've ever had, you know, offered free. So I don't know if that will be, and that's what we're trying to find out, right? Will that mean that we have a waitlist or not? So I think since we're so new, I don't really want to speculate.
Yeah. Chris, is your time?
Yeah, I'm not sure if this is exactly the right relevancy, but I think it was Dominique Kirk had emailed us a while back about us, an example of a child who goes to the half-day and then stays over and has lunch in a different room, and then goes back to the afternoon half-day. So you can have that to, the peer stay through the whole day even though they're not signed up as a full-day. Am I, do you guys remember that either? I'm not sure if I just.
I'll tell you what's, what families can do this year. So the SEBA, so Jamie Raposa is leading this. She's our social education building administrator. So she has created a new schedule for next year, and families could, on the full day, stay the full day, but if there are, this is where we're able to, to open up more full-day programs. But if a family just want a morning, they could come in the morning and go, right? But others can stay the full day. So that's how we can open up two more slots.
Okay, I'm not sure. She was suggesting it as a new idea, that you could have that to your carryover from one half-day into another by having them do lunch somewhere else. Or while, yeah, lost some rest time was happening.
The reason I think that moving to that a family's just want a morning, we, we didn't get a whole lot of people that wanted afternoon. Yeah, right, yes, exactly. So that, that afternoon is always troublesome. But if people wanted morning, they could, but if they wanted the full day, they could stay the full day.
Oh, so they could do that. They could. But you don't, you have a certain number of full-day slots, and then you have morning slots and afternoon slots. People don't want the afternoon slots, but they do want full-day.
They want full-day or mornings is what we're finding out. So Jay created a schedule, so we have four of those opportunities. Yeah.
I'm just curious if, do we have a rough, rough idea at this point, how this compares to like previous years? If we have any numbers? Like how our enrollment this year at this point compares to what we had before, if it's like about the same or?
This is higher. This is definitely higher at this point in the year. Yeah.
That's fair, because that's like apples and.
Yes, yeah, that's what I'm.
Yeah, so how many half-days do we have? Like how many half-days or classrooms do we have?
So they won't know that until they get all the information in. And so I said, we'll have to give an update later. So they're a week of.
Fair enough.
February twenty-fourth, they will be reviewing all the.
Okay, how many?
Out of the sixty, I have no idea what they've offered. This is just sixty applications that come in, so they, they need time to do that.
So currently we have four full-day classrooms as of today. And then how many half-day classrooms do we have?
We don't know yet because what if they're all?
Today.
They're going to do all of that. Oh, you mean this year, this school year? This school year, we have three classrooms.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I mentioned that today as a mistake. Right now we have the two full-day, and we have three classrooms that are morning and afternoon half-days. I'm sorry, I mentioned today as a mistake. Right now, we have the two full-day, and we have three classrooms that are morning and afternoon half-days.
Not four full-days. This is.
We only have two full-days this year.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it was the confusion over today.
Yeah.
Meaning, today may stand on this year. Yeah, but I think we got there.
Okay.
No, it's okay. Okay, tell us about kindergarten.
Kindergarten. At the end of the conclusion of our kindergarten registration, that ended on January thirty-first, we had ninety-one registered. So that was, that was pretty good for our first week. And then to date, we have had some additional students. So we are close to being the same as last year, as of today. So that's very good news.
What was last year?
Just the total numbers. I'm just saying, to come in after the first week registration, and now we track it every week. So as of Friday, when I got the numbers, we were close to, close to, yeah, close to what we had last year.
Totally interesting question.
Yeah, exactly. So I just encourage, like, I mean, we definitely, it's, we can plan better the sooner we have kids. I just, you know, if you know anyone that's turning five by August thirty-first, encourage them to register so that we can. And I think everyone that's came in on that first week of registration registered early. Appreciate that. All right. Yes, this is No Guff Week. This is, this is great. I just wanted to share some of the activities that are happening this week. We have, first, I just want to say the community member, there's always a community member that's given the award of the No Guff Award for the week. And it is presented at Lawrence School during their ceremony, and that's February fourteenth at one-thirty. So that's a great event. I'll share that first. So some things that are happening, talking about the elementary school. At T-Ticket, I'll start there. They're having a pajama day and donations for the Falmouth Service Center. Thank you. That's great. At North, they have a kickoff activity called Kindness Blizzard. And here's their theme, a blizzard starts with just one snowflake, and one act of kindness can start a flurry of good. At Mullen Hall, they have cups of kindness. They're actually partnering with Coffee O, and they're decorating the coffee cup sleeves, and so they can spread kindness throughout the community. And at East, they're doing the kindness notes where students, you know, do the kindness notes and, you know, write messages to their peers. And so everyone can, they can share their kindness, somewhat to what we used to do with Valentine's Day and the Women of Kindness. So everyone can receive kindness. There's lots of things going on. Corresponding to high school, those are just some of the highlights. But all across the, this week, we've got the flyer passed around. Every week, they're doing something different. I'll just pass it on. You can kind of see, you know, the different shirts and dress up, just, you know, spirit.
But you mean every day?
Every day, it's like this week, every day this week.
Oh, you said every week. It's something different.
Every day this week. Sorry about that. Okay.
So I just, yeah, so I love No Guff. I loved Coach Gilbert that started it. And I just want to remind everyone that No Guff isn't just words. And I feel like it has at times turned into just words. And as of late, there's been a lot of guff all around. You can, it doesn't take a lot to look to see the guff around, whether it's at our, our work environment, our online environment, our community environment, our pick an environment, and there's plenty of it around. And I, I kind of want to propose a little kindness reset. I pride myself on Falmouth being a friendly place to be, and I feel like we can all be better. I feel like there's been ugly out there, and it's up to us to reset the kindness. I'm hopeful that everyone who is hearing about No Guff currently, that these are not just words, that we really, we, we need all really go home and think about how we can be better, because it starts with us and we can be better. So that's my thought on No Guff.
Good dream. Sort of similar theme, as a person with a first grader, we're going through No Guff Week for the first time. And I, observations I've had is that it does feel kind of like a lot of words, just in terms of my six-year-old's understanding of what's happening. She was awarded Peace Builder of the Week or something, and she got a piece of paper, but she couldn't explain to me why she was given that. She didn't understand why anybody else was given that. She didn't know what it was. So perhaps that's just my six-year-old not knowing. But to me, it feels a little bit like flashy actions. And one of the things that I, the reason I ran for school committee was that I think we need to have trainings for the teachers and the staff about nonviolent communications. I think we need to have more in-depth approaches to learning how to embody No Guff, if that's something we're really gonna be doing in the schools. I think in the older grades, it seems to have stuck more, and people understand what's happening, and it's a little more coherent. But for a first grader, she gets these things, and she has no idea what it means or why she's receiving an award. And she doesn't understand how it impacts her life or what the goal is, you know? She's trying to be a nice kid, but it doesn't, doesn't necessarily come through. And then if you're a bus driver or a teacher yells one day, they're not embodied in that moment. And so some school districts like Cambridge have nonviolent training for their staff members on an annual basis, I think. And so that's something that I would be interested in, since we're talking about it this week. Okay. Yeah, please.
So I just want to give a shout-out to the Rotary Club. They are, they do recognitions of our students. And so the Rotary Club has a close relationship with our high school guidance office. And so there's service projects and leadership awards. So shout-out to Alan Kazarian for working with the Rotary and assisting in the awards. So this is a monthly event where a student is selected and then recognized at a Rotary meeting. I'm gonna read this so far this year, but I was at the last Rotary meeting. I just want to give a shout-out for Jacob Laurie and his connection to the bits that were here tonight, because he's part of the mentoring program, the Falmouth High School Mentoring. And he literally mentors four students. So he goes to two of one school, and then he goes, so he goes to three schools every week to see his mentees. And I know he's going for it, but I just thought that was, so we're talking about mentoring here. And so he was just an incredible kid. But every month, they're recognizing someone. So I think it's, you know, it's really special. Amy Leonardi is the one that organizes the presentations and presents them with a certificate and a gift card from a local business. So this year so far, Theodore Albee, Emily Burganka, Chase Briggs, Rory Brown, Jackie Collins, Brody Costa, Ben Dean, Jordan DiPietro, Rowan Estes, Christina Domeno, Charlie Hostetler, Maggie McManaman, Connor, Scott Pallini, Robert Simpkins, and then Jacob Laurie were recognized. And I just, I think it's a great that we have an organization in this town that, that connects with our schools and recognizes our students. Rotary also has Ryla, which is Rotary Youth Leadership Awards. And so there is a conference that this, I'm gonna name the students that are going to on the sixteenth, and Rotary is actually gonna pay for their registration. And the students this year that were selected were Sophia Collins, Olivia Dagel, Jack Rostom, Samantha Irving, Lily, Lily and Carl, Evelyn Rudd, and Matthew Trabu. So I just, there is a connection locally, and I just wanted to give a shout-out for our students that are being recognized. Okay, so the other things are the article for town meeting to assess, for us to access this Special Education Stabilization Fund for the two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars that you've been voted on, was voted unanimously to move forward by FinCom with no questions. So now it'll go before town meeting. Mass, the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents is joining a coalition to support increased funding for K-12 education, most specifically to address the inflation gap, special education, transportation. And so in this letter, I just wanted to read a little, and you're probably gonna hear more about it. So I just wanted to make sure that, that you're aware that this is happening. There's a group trying to help with the funding. It says, Massachusetts, as they've seen, a perfect storm of factors that make it nearly impossible to balance budgets without reductions that will have a negative impact on student learning, enrichment, and support. I just want to say, despite Massachusetts' reputation as a leader in public education, public schools across the Commonwealth are facing devastating budget cuts to student programs and staff due to rising costs that far outpace available funding with higher costs in special education tuition and student transportation, and the unique financial challenges faced by the rural regional schools. I just want to say here again, we are so fortunate that we, the Town of Falmouth recognizes the need. And again, I just want to restate that you voted on a five-point-five percent increase in our budget that the town supported. And it's, we're going before FinCom at the end of this month. So I just wanna, you know, whenever you pick up a paper in any town across the Commonwealth, I mean, you see prices from districts asking for overrides, cutting staff and programs, closing schools. And I just feel like we're very fortunate, again, that Falmouth understands that the cost tallies, and that they are, they're supporting us. Paul has shared numerous times about the rising costs of special education and other non-salary items that we have been facing. The fact is, everything is just more expensive. So we have a strategy that we have started a couple of years ago in making sure that as we reduce staff, with enrollment going down, that it's only been through attrition. That it has not, we have not in Falmouth had to actually cut staff. And I think that's really important. But this is, this was a strategy that was started several years ago, and we have been just diligent about being able to reduce staff along with enrollment without making cuts and without the rising of classroom sizes. So again, this year, looking at next year in our budget, we do not have to have cuts to our programs. We do not have to reduce staff as staff other than through attrition. So once again, this is three years in a row that we are able to do that within our budget, and that is an incredible feat with what's happening. I still agree with, you know, that funding is necessary. It shouldn't always have to fall back onto our town. So trying to figure out something at the state level to help is important. But I just wanted to share that, that there is, and that our, and that our budget and the standing we've had, and it's been the amount of strategic planning that we have done, that we've been able to do that. In January, moving on, sorry, I'll search any questions about that. In January, the school attending report is due, and it's based upon the October first numbers. And so I usually report on where Falmouth students are attending school, right? So we know who's in Falmouth. There are state private schools. We have the high in the last five years was two-hundred-and-ten students attending state private schools. We are the lowest in five years right now at one-hundred-and-sixty-two. The charter schools, the highest in the last five years was one-hundred-and-twenty-four, and this year we have one-hundred-and-seventeen. Homeschool, high in the last five years was eighty-eight. This year, we are at forty-seven. And virtual, we have a high in the last five years was ninety-one. We have, our lowest this year is fifty-one students attending virtual school. Now, also in the, this student attending report, it's also includes our out-of-district placements through the student services that they report. As of the October twenty-one, so October first, we had thirty-three students out-of-district placements. Twenty-three of the students are in collaborative, and five are in private, private schools. Just so you know, that our current number of out-of-district, this, remember, that's based on October one. The reports do in January. So the numbers, when you look at numbers, that's the problem when you, you see. So right now, just so you know, we have forty-one students out-of-district. So when you hear one number, it's because of when the state requires the numbers to be reported, it can get somewhat confusing. So we are forty-one students out-of-district at this time. Also reported is for the Upper Cape Tech. So our numbers have grown over the past five years for Upper Cape Tech. The past two years specifically, as Upper Cape Tech has expanded their programs and the number of students they accept. This year, we are at two-hundred-and-five students attending Upper Cape Tech. We also had twenty-one students return to us this year, six students from Falmouth Academy, six students from Sturgis, and nine students from Upper Cape Tech.
So when you say return, they were at, they started, not that they, so they started here at some point, then they left there, but somewhere else, and now they've come back.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I do that. All right. So moving on, the harvest of the month is butternut squash this month, and the taste testing will be a mustard, honey mustard-laced butternut bite. I'm gonna pass this around so you can see.
I think that was the thing that it was.
It was a nice article, I don't know if you got to read it, but of our chef, Laura Higgins-Baltzley. It's great. I mean, this, the connections that she's making with our food justice initiative and Harding, and then also all of the farms, the local farms. And she's just really good. So it's fantastic. But anyway, so I'm gonna pass this around. And then, so we always do a tasting of whatever the harvest of the month is, and then we do a actual meal. And the lunch this, this time is butternut bisque and fajita chicken pizza bread. And that will be served on February twenty-seventh, but I'll pass this around. And then just a shout-out, we were able to get all of this squash that had fire district that we needed from Silverbrook Farm in Dartmouth. So thank you again for all of our connections, and I'll pass, pass that around. Last week was School Counselors Week, and so I'll pass this this way. So we, every year, the school counselors, it's a national school counselors, and we do a proclamation. So you can see, you can see in, as superintendent, I have the honor of signing that our counselors are just so kind and caring. They're talented in their craft. They work with students. They work so hard with our students, and just offering those mental health services, addressing student and family concerns, and engaging in everyday, just events in the schools are just a part of our school. So I just, a shout-out to all of our counselors. They deserve our praise and recognition. So just wanted to show that.
Okay, I guess I've got a few more.
They warned me, but.
So I'm gonna be a panelist at the Educating All Cape Cod Children. The title of the conference is Celebrating the Mosaic Continues. It's next summer. The N-L-K Education Task Force of Cape Cod is sponsoring the conference. The panelist portion of the conference is called Highlighting Cape Cod D E I. I will be sharing the initiatives, programs, and curriculums focused on equity and inclusion for all students. I will be sharing just, just many ways we include and engage all of our students, every, every student, every day, and how they belong in public schools. And then Henry St. Julien will also be presenting at the same conference, and his title, his, his area is Path to the Beloved Community. So once registration opens, I'm gonna send you the information in case you would like to go. I'm really excited this year. Usually, this conference is the same week as the superintendent's conference in the summer, and they're on separate weeks this year. So I actually get to go to this one for the first time, so I'm excited. Little League Deals. I know you read the newspaper and all. As soon as I heard that the children's spring season could be canceled, I immediately picked up the phone. I called the town, and I offered our school field. I think, you know, I don't want to see. I think, you know, I don't want to see any families or children miss out. So we, this past week, Jeremiah Pearson from DPW, big shout out to Jeremiah for all he does for our schools all the time. But right now, he's gone around and identified three fields that are close to the size, that he can make regulation for whatever regulation is for Little League. And so the Morse Pond Lower Field, the Lawrence Smaller Field, and the Falmouth High School JV Field can all be used, and so I'm really excited. They currently have two fields, will have three fields, so they'll be able to work out a schedule. So very happy for, that we can help out our kids that are in Little League. Okay, try and use a try and music awards, so did something very different this year. Instead of at the high school and being very formal, the, it was held at the Flying Brit, and the students at Jazz Band played, and the student vocal sang. And so it was a very uplifting event, it was fun. I asked some kids afterwards if they, if they liked it better, and they were like, it was a lot more fun. It was kind of more, a little bit more informal, and so they enjoyed themselves. Steve Edwards, along with Andrew Helwick, the new instrumental music director, and Chris Rici, the choral director, did a great job in leading the program. There's 11 new students that were inducted, and 12 continued student members recognized as seniors that, so it was a great night. And then Jennifer Edwards was presented the newest honorary member for all that she has done to work and support the music program at Falmouth Public Schools, so that was nice. And then immediately following that, I attended the farewell to Jennifer Edwards reception, and all this was last Thursday night. So I just want to publicly thank Jennifer Edwards, myself. She has been a fantastic support and working with us. I mean, her, she puts on great races, you know, as the executive director. But she also has offered opportunities for our students, mostly our sports students or students in certain activities. If they help out with the race, money goes to their, their organization, right? So whether it's the football team or whatever that come out, then they can earn money for that. And organizing all that's been great. But she also has, helps facilitate our Falmouth Public Schools grants, like playground equipment, sports equipment, the scoreboards. She was instrumental in helping us get the new track at the high school, she's just done so much. So she's a friend of Falmouth Public Schools, and we're going to miss her, so just a shout out for Jennifer, she's already gone. We'll maybe hear more about how she's going in her next job. Okay, last Friday, the Acting Commissioner of Education, Russell Johnson, sent a letter to all superintendents titled "Supporting All Students Including LGBTQ Students", and I'd just like to read and make a few remarks about the letter. It, it just, I won't read the whole letter, just, just some portions. But it's "The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education: Educational Vision Remains Unchanged. In its simplest form, it is to create a public education system where every student is seen, heard, and valued, and where all students have the opportunity to thrive." I think that embodies exactly what Falmouth Public Schools believes. And I'm, I'm glad that the state came out, it is, it matches our values for every student, our mission. And so we, we want students to know and feel that they belong here, every student, every day. The letter continues, "This work remains firmly grounded in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 76, Section 5, which prohibits discrimination in public schools based on race, color, sex, gender identity, religion, national origin, or sexual orientation. Massachusetts schools remain responsible for providing safe and supportive learning environments for all students." And I just want to remind everyone all the work that we've done under safe and supportive schools. And, you know, we put this out last year. I am sure that we could, you know, update this so people can see all that we're doing. It's under the DESI spring work, and, and what we're doing to make sure that our kids feel safe and supported, all kids feel safe and supported here. And one more section of the letter, if I may. "Research consistently demonstrates that when schools take proactive steps to foster inclusivity through strong policies affirming practices and supportive educators, students experience improved mental health, academic success, and overall well-being." And this letter was sent to all of you last week after I received it. Great, the next, the next Fresh Market will be held February 13th in two days, right here at T-Ticket School, from 3:45 to 4:45 in this cafeteria, excited about that. We got some flyers to send around to you. We have Falmouth High School Back to the Lighthouse Art Show. Art Show, it's open until March 5th at Falmouth High School. The reception is planned for February 27th from 2:15 to 3:30. The show will move to the Knopsga Lightkeeper's House and open from March 27th to April 11th there. And the reception will be on March 27th from 4:30 to 6:00, so you have that flyer. And then one more flyer, one more, I'm going to stop after this one. Always have to give a shout out every, every time I can, so they have to yep. Thank, again, huge supporters of Falmouth Public Schools, they're our education foundation. They raise a lot of money to support our teachers and their innovative ideas and programs that all benefit our students. The gala is a way to raise money, it is, will be held on March 22nd at the Seacrest. So I hope you join us, it's a lot of fun. I know, it's changing it up. I know. Junior Breakfast was always at the Seacrest, and we had it at the Falmouth this year, and now the gala's always been at the, I know, it went to the Seacrest. Okay, thank you so much for giving me the time, but there was a lot of this time, but we only have a meeting February 23rd.
Okay, routine business, is there motion to approve the minutes from January 28th? Thank you, Mike, second. Thanks, Katrina, are there any questions or edits to them? Awesome, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Yep, abstention for Chris, the motion passes. Community reports?
I do too, go ahead. So Margaret and I went to student advisory.
Oh, yeah.
And some of the things, we had a great meeting with the kids, and really, really talking, and it was really fun, and it was nice to hear some more from them. First, we talked about the relief that they're feeling about MCAS no longer being required to graduate. And mostly, they said it was because biology and sophomore year, if you fail it, you have to take it again, if you fail it on the MCAS. So they were like, feeling embarrassed about that and stressing about it, so they felt better. Some of them that day were participating, they'd just come from a QPR training for freshmen for the hoop squad to learn the hoop approach to teach the freshmen. And then several of them were about to go for the reunification drill later that day, so they're like very, very busy. We asked them, Margaret and I asked them what success would look like for them personally, and they all kind of crossed the board on a similar theme of feeling like they want to take high-level classes, but in things that you're interested in and enjoy. Having a balance of fun electives, not too stressful, so they can maintain their grades, but be that and be happy and keep a balance, and set attainable but challenging goals for themselves, and just so mature and thoughtful. The other question was, how was, how would you describe Falmouth High School to a kid in another district? And some of the things they said were they thought that Falmouth High School had more choices of classes. Great community connection, not just in the schools, but it really feels like the whole community is participating. I guess they mentioned that, I don't know, that week as an example. They really talked about principal Paris playing music as they come into the building in the morning. And if you're late, if you're running towards the building, he'll do a countdown for you with how many seconds you have to. They love their principal. And then we talked a lot about how they really feel like specific teachers for each of them, but a different teacher for every single kid. It was really remarkable. Every single one had a different teacher that really had supported them personally, taken time out to notice when they were having a bad day, and like sit down and talk to them. It was just amazing, every single one had a different teacher. And then they would chime in and be like, oh, yeah, I love this. And so that was really heartwarming, just the difference the teachers are making for them. I, I kind of wish that we could also have representation from kids who are not in the honors classes, not at the, you know, doing like top-tier things in the school, that would be nice to hear from them as well. So I don't know if we can change it up sometimes, have like a different student advisory, I don't know if that's a possibility. The other report I had was from the Teach for Learning Tech Group. And our meeting last week, we took a report, a document from the Department of Education that Andrew had physically printed, because he wasn't sure if it was going to remain on their website, that was talking about AI and resources for teachers. And we kind of went through that document, and it turned into a slideshow presentation summarizing that, and some points we could come up with as a group, so that we would have that to reference later. So that's an ongoing conversation about AI in that committee.
I have a couple of things. Our negotiations, as we all know, is ongoing, and going extraordinarily well.
Amen.
Policy is also ongoing. We've had a few things come before us that we have since put in front of the committee, and I think that that's also. I feel like we're moving along.
Yes.
Policy, okay. I also wanted to mention, I had the pleasure of being invited to the Condition of Education, put on by the Reni Center. I've been invited before, and I was invited this year. And this year, it was at the UMass Club in Boston, which was a different venue. Usually, it's at the Armwood Parker, but they are under renovation. So it was really exciting to hear people who were really excited about education. Not that our group is not, but it was nice to hear from other people in education. There was the director, the executive director of the Reni Center, that opened things up, and he was sort of the leader of the, how the day progressed. There was a keynote address from the Massachusetts Secretary of Education and Executive Office of Education, Patrick Tettweiler. I think I butchered his last name. And then we also heard from Chad Detremont, who's also the executive director, same gentleman I spoke of before. Alexis Leanne, who was the Director of Policy, and being a policy nerd, I found her thought very interesting. And then this year was kind of a new, they had a panel discussion from Amy Kershaw, who was the Commissioner of Massachusetts Department of Early Education Care. Russell Johnson, who you had mentioned, he's the Acting Commissioner of DESI. And No Ortega, who was the Commissioner of Massachusetts Department of Higher Education. So we had the littles, the middle, and then the after-graduation represented. And hearing their conversations and how they kind of worked in concert together, and how just, you know, following children and it turning them into successful young people was, it was a really nice discussion. I hope that I am invited again, and I'm happy to, I specifically brought this back from Margaret, but I'm happy to share anything else. And there was a data dashboard QR code, which was very exciting, I'm happy to pass on as well, as well as an action guide. So some of the slides, you think we can get? We can definitely get the slide that we asked, yep. So there's that, and then another thing I wanted to mention. The Back to the Lighthouse reception, I was happily on that, I chaperoned that art trip that we had gone down here for. That was a very exciting day. And I love to see the creativity that the artists bring from the day. So I hope that everyone has an opportunity, there's two opportunities, to attend the reception at Falmouth High School, and then super exciting at the Lighthouse Keeper's House up at Knopsga, which will go on for just under a month. So I really hope that everyone has an opportunity to go check out the amazing artists that have worked so hard for this, and be sure to give a thanks to the amazing Jane Baker, who puts these together. And I think that my last thing that I was going to mention was, if you haven't got your tickets to the gala, please get your tickets to the gala, it's super fun if you've not been. It looks like they're going back to the old style, where it's going to be all evening. So I'm, like a dinner and dancing and cash bar, it hasn't been like this since before COVID. So if you don't have your tickets, please get them, and I will see you there.
My update was now evaluation. So we met last week, as you know, if you've been on the committee before, we have to follow the DESI guidelines. And so we're in, we just completed the mid-cycle, and then we were prepping for what comes next, which is the summative. So this meeting was Lori reporting on her mid-cycle conversations with all members of the school committee on how things were going so far. Progress toward all three of her goals was on track, and there weren't some big changes that, that were suggested by members to make edits to the goals. So everything is the same for the rest of the year. There was noted praise around goal two, which I call the green goal, because I can't remember what it's actually titled, but it's the one about sustainability, our green stuff. And then, then we talked about the guidance document that is used to create the summative, and what that summative process looks like at the end of the year. So we, you know, we have to use the pieces that DESI gives us, like that horrible chart. And we were going back and forth with following their rules for how we have to, how we have to do all the pieces. So we made some edits to clean up the conversation, the process from last year, because it was new last year. So we tried to like basically take some of the places we ran into hiccups and clean up the language so that it's more clear. So Glenda and Margaret are proofreading, and we're going to double-check, make sure it's all good, and then it'll come to the community so you can read through that, what we do on the next step. Is that everything? Did I get it? Okay. Any other committee? Yeah?
Just to follow, I wanted to, one follow for the student advisory. Every student had a goal that they knew this is what they were going to do, and they felt they had learned at the high school, because it's the opportunities they had at the high school to really follow what their interests were and to do that. The other thing, maybe it's mine or his, I did write to Jane Baker today, because when I got this in my email, March 27th is the date of the Health Field. And I'm not sure what time the Health Field is, but it's very high to be at Knopsga, and at the Health Field, it's at the same time.
The Health Field's at the evening.
And so this is 4:30 or 6:00. So that's why I did write to Jane Baker, I just mentioned that it was the same day as the Health Field.
Because the reception at Knopsga, you can go at any time during that time.
Yeah, I just thought she might kind of know that. That's all.
All right, any other?
Oh, I mean, are we done with the committee before?
Katrina's got a.
So farming Falmouth, which I used to be on board of, and Carmella Mieske of the administration have been collaborating to come to write some grants for money for East Falmouth School Garden and Mullin Hall School Garden. So we completed, I forget how many, four applications for different grants before, the last deadline was January 31st. And collaboratively, we wrote those grants, and they're sent out, and we're waiting to see what money we can get back. But we're hoping that we can renovate and rebuild those two school gardens at East and Mullin over the spring, but probably more the summer. So we'll be looking for volunteers, and like Kim Halsford had said during her public comment, that's going to be an upcoming thing, with a lot more volunteers needed, but exciting, this is, it's great action.
Can I respond to that? So I was on the original courtyard, so I'm happy to volunteer, and I'm also happy to reach out to a few other volunteers that were part of that. We have some final pictures, you know, as I think, when you're talking about rebuilding them.
Yeah, that's a good point, because I was part of Mullin Hall when it got started. We can like tap into people that did the first.
I have a round, you might get a lot of volunteers.
Well, another, another point that I was going to mention is that they have finders of curriculum at Mullin Hall. Every teacher has this curriculum, and we should make sure that that goes at least to East, since they'll be getting this renovation. But it should go to every elementary school, and it's curriculum for the elementary schools, but yeah, we should send copies of that to.
Yep. I can tell you, so I actually have on my list, but I was excited to hear Kim's, what they're doing at East.
Yep, I can tell you, so I actually have a mind list, but I was excited to, um, hear Kim's, um, what they're doing at East. So I'm super excited, yes, and I'm happy to help. Because I did.
Are we on the next agenda or are we still?
Nope, we're done, we're done with, uh, committee.
Okay. So just a comment and a recommendation. So I am mindful of the fact that we can't act on specifics of, um, public comment because of open meeting laws. But yet, every meeting we hear, uh, frustrations of, of a particular group. And I understand their frustrations because we are able, we aren't able to acknowledge what they're saying. We can't do it through email, we can't, we can't discuss it during executive session. We are discussing it during, uh, school committee meetings because things aren't on the agenda. So how do we acknowledge that? We're, if, that's not to acknowledge the validity, it's just to acknowledge that we are hearing, um, things. And, um, my colleague Margaret has recommended a couple of times the possibility of having a forum, because we wouldn't be so constrained by open meeting laws. And so, um, I don't know if that's something that we perhaps can't discuss now, perhaps have to discuss it at another meeting. But I just feel that we have to do something as a committee to acknowledge what we are hearing week after week after week.
I'm just, I wanna clarify, it wasn't just my idea. When I was at the conference, I talked about, um, the, the amount of time that people talked about their frustrations. And the, um, the woman who was at the issue for the meeting, I guess she wasn't, she's not our representative, but, uh, she was.
Oh, giving a workshop.
I gave you everything.
Yeah.
She basically said that, you know, um, the time to talk should be ten minutes. And if there's more than ten minutes, she said, it's not an open, it's not just hearing people. If you have people who need to talk that long, that you should have a forum. So it wasn't my idea, it came from, uh, MAS, that you should have a forum and at that forum you could have a guy. So I, I just don't wanna take credit, wasn't my idea, it came from the bar first from the US.
Okay, thank you. Can I make your comment through you? Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna have a discussion about whether we can have, oh, about scheduling a forum, yes, violate open meeting, but, I mean, no, that wasn't it, but I'll, I'll hold on anyway. I, yeah, I'll, it's okay.
I touched on this earlier, but can we get the numbers for the preschool and kindergarten? Last, let's say, five years, so you can see their three to four year olds and how they've progressed with a better visual understanding of what, I don't know, hypothetical, might happen. At least we have, I don't know if that's possible, I think, break into three, fours or.
Yeah. And, but, yeah, and then we probably have to update, because, like, when we look at the past ones, we'll just have to keep updating as people register, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense. Quickly, I was gonna say the, uh, our goals have listening sessions. Our school committee goals include listening sessions, I don't know if that's, um, the same thing they're asking for. I would like to make a request for a breakdown of the MCAS scores by school, which I think was asked for when we went through those. And, um, I just wanted to officially request a school by school.
I think it was right after somebody. It came right after that. Yeah, that's after that. So we can just reset.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? Oh, everybody wants that, that's, Mike seconded it. All in favor? All right, we're adjourned. Oh, we're adjourned.